Come on with the silence in due value.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hang in. I don't think anybody signed up, did they?
No sir.
Okay, number five is presentation by Hannah Dugie of the Flores Hopina Festival Royal Court.
Okay. You want to do?
Good evening, good evening and thank you for having us. I am Queen Elect of a Fall for the 2022 Court of Exotic Destination and I would like for you to meet the rest of our court elect.
Hi, I'm First Member Princess Gomez Brava.
Hello, I am Princess Elect Eliana Hinajosa.
Hi, I'm Princess Elect Ariana Gismon.
Hi, I'm Princess Elect Gator Tour.
Hi, I'm Princess Elect Fran Mee.
We are so excited to be able to visit our neighboring community and we would like to thank y'all for having us. I know each year me and my mom come and wrote about this Stockdale Water Hall in Jubilee, so it was fun to be able to come here with Pina Festival and invite y'all out the second full weekend in October to our festival. So, thank you.
Well, thank y'all very much. Y'all want to take a picture with me?
Yes.
There you go. That's good. I'll stand right here. Yeah. You got good stairs this year?
Alright, everyone looking this way. Alright, we got one with Mayor Wolf. Can we get all the county members in here please?
So you'll ring it off?
Hope so.
Are y'all talking stairs?
No, we're just taking pictures.
You put on the rope then?
Yes, every year we come and hope.
We gotta bounce the glitter out from the man here.
Nope.
Alright, everyone smiling. Oh, y'all want to do so? Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Stop now. Get ready to transfer. Get ready to transfer. That'd be good. Hey, congratulations on your life. Now we'll go to number six, presentation by Wayne Byron, the City Audit for the fiscal year 2022, 2021.
Good evening. Um, everybody has a copy of the report. To the page insert.
Mr. Dugie Jackson.
File?
No.
Thank y'all.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
No, it's a mute. The long drinker of the file, the one that was speaking. But. I would think she probably looks like. You think he could be David Thomas Graham, don't he?
Sure, let's go with it.
Okay, everybody got a copy of the report. Um, if you turn the pages, one and two of the report. Um, this is our letter, our opinion letter. The purpose of performing an audit is expressing an opinion on financial statements and this is what is called an unmodified opinion. Um, to look on page one where it says our auditors responsibility at second sentence is that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. So that's the rules and procedures to be followed when we perform an audit. Every auditing firm in the country has the same set of rules and procedures to follow or stating that we did follow them. Um, what an unmodified opinion is is nothing to keep our attention that causes the modified opinion in any manner. It's also that we provide all the information we have to examine, including having the city manager bring some stuff over for our office. Okay, um, if you turn over to page seventeen just quickly here. Page seventeen is kind of a listing of all the major funds in the city with the exception of the utility funds. That first column is your general fund. By the way, I had an exit interview set this morning with the city management secretary and, um, this first column is the general fund. If you go down to the bottom of that first column, you'll see that, uh, ending balance, fund balance was minus $203,466. You go up one line, seventy year over the minus $315,899 fund balance. And then go up one more line and you have a net increase for the year of $112,433. And that, that minus $203,000 is, is kind of missed. I know you have a reason. I mean, you're going to go over with the reasoning why it's actually minus $203,000, but you have so many funds in the city that when you put money, you have so many reserve funds in the city that, um, other cities would have that merge into the general fund. You guys don't do that here. So, did you want to explain, did they know why that's?
The, as most of the weeks are almost passed by on the general ledger and your P and L that you cover. That $203,466 reflects the street projects and different things that we had during the period time, the parks project at the splash pad and the stuff we did on Central Park. Most of those funds came out of that.
Okay, there's three other funds on this page. There's Economic Development Fund. And if you look at, and that's that second column, look at the very bottom, you have one point one million dollars. You have a very hefty amount. Now, third column is a street savings fund. You have $955,000 in net. And then they had that water improvement fund, $2,000 point water improvement fund. They had kind of zeroed out at the end of the year. Next, let's just move over here. You have very good reserves. I mean, you have, you have good reserves in the city. Let's just, let's just look, um, put forward page number, um, nineteen, the report. As an audit draft, I really kind of find this extremely interesting. This is your budget, this is your general fund again, but to hear this fourth column, you got your, um, original, um, original budget as adopted. You have your final budget. That's the second column. Third column, your budgetary income expenses. So this schedule is working out in more detail than what we just looked at. And you got your budget variance in that last column. And if the variance is a positive numbers, it's like positive variance if it's got brackets on it, it's a negative variance. So overall, your revenues, total revenues, you came over budget by thirty, almost $34,000. And if you go down below that, your total expenditures, you came in under budget by almost $188,000. And I was remarking to the city manager this morning, um, not only do you adopt a balanced budget, but you adopt a surplus in your budget. That's very rare. I mean, rare, rare, rare. Just want to see that happen. What that tells me is you have extremely conservative fiscal policies in the city. Um, flipping over to page twenty, twenty-one, um, in particular, page twenty-one, these are your utility funds. These are presented a little differently. These are what's called proprietary funds. And you can go to that first column on page twenty-one, almost to the bottom, one line to the bottom. You have unrestricted equity, your unrestricted fund balance is $629,450. Go to the next column. Last year, it was $639,999. So it kind of stays about the same. The water fund, that third column, you had unrestricted equity of $477,000 compared with unrestricted equity prior year appeared to be $9,000. So it went up about $90,000. And then your fifth and sixth column is your gas fund. You have minus $591,000 equity at the end of the year compared with minus $578,000 the year before. Now, actually, after the exit this morning, you're going to be, you're really going to be parsing that off to somebody else. Okay, let's just look, turn over page twenty-two of the report. Um, and page twenty-two is the income statement for these funds. You got what this year and the prior year. If you go right in the middle of the page where it says operating income loss, that's usually a good indicator of how these funds are doing. The water fund last year, you had a loss, operating loss of $158,000 compared with a $22,900 profit last year before. So it had been down by about $180,000, $188,000. Um, if you look, big reason, of course, like, um, the city manager mentioned, um, you had a lot of repairs, water storage tanks.
And this next year's always going to reflect the same.
Well, of course, you have good reserves in that, in that water, water fund. Um, the third column, you had, um, $68,000 profit in the sewer fund. Previous year, you had $49,000 profit. And then the fifth and sixth column is your gas fund. You had $19,000 loss last year compared with the $59,000 loss the year before. Okay, then going over here to page number, um, forty-four, the report. Page forty-four, the report is your debt. All the debt of the city. Um, you will see that you have, it's broken down into parts, one part governmental activities, which is basically your general fund. And then you have business type activities, which is your, our utility funds, water, sewer, gas. If you go to that fourth column, down at the bottom there, your total debt at ten years, one point seven four eight million dollars, of which almost several, um, sixteen dollars, one point six seven million dollars, right now, one point six million dollars, one point seven million dollars, it are the USDA bonds. You have under debt, capital lease, that's when you buy equipment, finances. You have debt pension payable and you have OPEB liability. That debt pension payable is your TMRS plan. What you do is a, at the end of the year, you look at what's in the plan compared with what's owed on the plan. If more is owed on the plan, it's considered debt, which is the case. That doesn't seem like very much. And then you have OPEB liability and that's your benefits for retired people. These are all, these numbers are all calculated by actuaries. Okay, um, one more thing. Very last page of the report, the last two pages of the report. The last two pages of the report are your other funds in the city. And you can just kind of start on page eighty-one at the very bottom. Just go from left to right and you can see what's in each fund. I was telling this, that Mr. The city manager, I've never seen quite your quite method of doing things, but you sure do get results, saving, saving money, keeping building reserves. You have a pretty self-explanatory reserves. Even that, your debt service fund, you have $250,000 in net. Maybe that shaded area in page eighty-two. What's that? He does a good job. Um, okay, in the front, there's an insert, management letter comments. Um, we know the city is not paying city council members through the payroll account. Therefore, it has not been taxed. We recommend city PR council members to the payroll account and ensure proper taxing. Um, then you have segregation duties. I think we discussed that at our exit. And I think what, um, what, what the city is going to do or the city manager is going to do is he goes over these finances with y'all at these meetings and, uh, and I think after, after the meeting or after he goes over the finances, he's going to have to cite some kind of affidavit or something.
In other words, I present you with the P and L every month. We have open discussions about where the finances, why the balances are positive, why the balances are negative. I bring you to your attention and to get through transparency or whatever, we're going to come up with a document that each month, home members here, I have your signature on before you leave the meeting that you, I present you with the profit and losses. We discuss the finances of the community at that time.
Silent, silent, David. Okay, and then on that page, on page two, government receipts. Um, the city does not have an ordinance establishing fees for plots or markers of the cemetery. The city is still using the same amounts that were charged by the cemetery association before the city took over. Uh, so we suggest the city has new ordinance with rates only, or if you want, I'd like to discuss with the city manager, just put on your agenda and, and just vote to, um, what I, what I say.
Transpowering.
Yeah, vote to just use the rates that were, that were used by the cemetery association. Either way is good. Or set your own rate. That's all I have.
Any questions? If not, we go to number seven, discussion.
Do you need to approve the?
Yeah, it's on the.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Discussion and action to approve the fiscal 2022, 2021 city audit conducted by Byron Company. We have a motion to accept the audit. We have a motion by Councilman Stavodola. Second, Councilwoman Lynn. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne.
Discussion and action to amend it to the previous meeting held August ninth to twenty-nine to two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion by Councilman Vasquez. Second by Councilman Stavodola. All in favor? Motion passes again. Number nine, discussion and action on solid waste contract rate adjustment from Waste Connections Inc.
We have the CPI, uh, letter from our Waste Connections, our solid waste collection. Uh, of course, out of the due to CPI, the total was a 12.6% increase in the rate. However, we value the suspension longstanding relationship between the city of Stockdale Waste Connections and Lone Star Inc. and would like to offer a 7% rate adjustment for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-two. So, is, uh, we know we're going to have a 7% and we would like to pass that along to our citizens. And the renewal for the new waste contract will probably start in May of next, next year. The contract comes up October twenty.
So that's when you would see the increases?
Pardon me?
That's when we would see the increases, May.
No, we received this increase immediately.
Immediately.
And then when do we go up for bids?
We will probably start that, uh, RQ in May and then the contract's up in October.
Okay, for next year?
Yes, sir.
And so what will that change the rate on people?
Seven percent. So if your total bill is $22, uh, is.
Go up another four, about another sixty? Like that? Okay, double.
The ones that are going to have the largest increases, of course, are the ones with the dumpsters and such as that. Because most of those, you know, are a hundred bucks, eighty bucks. So they're looking at five dollars to $10 per pickup on monthly charge.
Do we need to approve that or is that just?
The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the rate increase from Waste Connection? Is that going to go up? By seven percent? Motion by Councilman Stavodola. Second, by Councilwoman Lynn. All in favor? Motion passes. Number ten, discussion and action to approve city of Stockdale FY 2022, 2022 city audits. Christmas is it?
Christmas Day.
Christmas Day?
I went by the calendar.
The holidays, uh, from Monday, October the tenth, Columbus Day, Friday, November eleventh, Veterans Day, Thursday and Friday, November twenty-four, twenty-five, Thanksgiving, Friday and Monday, December twenty-third and twenty-sixth for Christmas. Then, uh, Monday, January the second, New Year's, Monday, January sixteenth, Martin Luther King Day, Monday, February twentieth, President's Day, Friday, April seventh is Good Friday, Monday, May twenty-ninth is Memorial Day, Monday, June nineteenth is Juneteenth Day, Tuesday, July fourth is Independence Day and Monday is September fourth, Liberty Day.
That's a new one.
Yes.
We've never had that.
We've had twelve, we have thirteen, Juneteenth.
I thought I had fourteen.
Did you?
We never had Juneteenth before.
You can.
This is the first time.
I mean, that's, it's a new one, but it is mandated that we take that margin at Juneteenth Day. So, do we have a motion to approve the holiday? We have a motion by Councilwoman Lynn. Second by Councilman Stavodola. All in favor? Motion passes again. Number eleven, discussion and action on Stockdale Fire Department Junior Emergency Training Program presented by the STEM program.
So they were not able to make it today. Um, they ended up getting cut off on some, on another project. Um, I can explain it now if you guys would like and kind of give you an idea of what that is. Um, the STEM program is actually, is that okay? The STEM program is a nonprofit organization that's out there that's bringing all the kids that are in high school trying to get into some type of emergency services. Um, this can be fire, EMS, combined, or one or the other. Um, they are doing it in accounting wise. So they've actually gone all throughout Wilson County to find who, what kids are looking to do this program. Now, this program, when they sign so many people up, there's so many grants that the Stockdale Fire Department can also go after because we're involved with this program. So this is another way for us to be able to bring in some extra income to update some equipment, to do whatever it is because we're part of this. So we have to make sure we have everything to part for these kids for them to do the training. Now, when we put them through the training, we put them through everything that there is, um, again, the grants come in for us to be able to pay for them to go to school and get all this training, training in-house or even man the station and be in a separate zone where we're not putting them in any type of hazard. But they're still part of the fire department. So because they'll be teenagers, they would have to go on our insurance as well. So that's something that I want to make sure you guys are clear of when this happens or if you guys permit us to get into this program, that that is okay. Um, again, there's one presentation that they have. It's kind of just in a nutshell what, what, uh, what I can just break down to you guys. But there's, from what we've been told, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants that come into fire departments allowing us to be part of this, this program.
Do you have any problem putting them on the insurance so we can get some more?
I won't know until we end those discussions. How about coverage?
I mean, I'm all in favor of it. I mean, I'd say to approve it and just see what happens.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if we can get big cost to.
But you still get reimbursement like you have been for the insurance that VFIS or they go under that?
So, and that's something that I'm going to have to look into as well. So this is all brought to us with revenue. Um, and we were looking at another avenue to bring in some revenue to us to help us out.
And it's volunteer.
And it's volunteer. It's for, it's only for volunteer. Um, I'm, from what I understand that they're trying, from a part of the paperwork mentions they can't go to a district, but, um, from what I was told so far here in Wilson County, none of the districts are jumping into it yet. So it's, it's just a few volunteer stations that are saying yes, but the, the district, uh, I don't know that they're going to get into the program.
Get them kids involved in something.
Well, see, I joined when I was sixteen. So.
Do you know of any other, um, surrounding cities that are doing it already?
So she said, the lady that presented it said that it's, uh, going to be like east, southeast of Bear County, that area, Guadalupe County, Wilson County, and maybe Antiguanzales County. That, and they do all the recruiting. They go out and do the recruiting. What they do is in those areas, the departments that are willing to participate are the ones where they will see where they fit and they let us know, hey, we have like ten students that are interested. Are you guys willing? So if that's the case, we have to commit. But with that commitment comes grants, comes more money and they do all the late work on that. So it kind of frees our hands. Besides that, we just have to be there to train them and show them what we do.
I mean, I think it's a good step for us and for the children. And once they get older, if they want to go further up into an organization. So, I have no problem. Do we have a motion to? Motion by Councilman Stavodola. Second by Councilwoman Lynn. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number twelve, discussion and action to reappoint Raymond Sanchez and Abel Salsar as Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Stockdale.
So Sharon, um, sent me this email where, um, she would like them to be reappointed as commissioners. Um, the time has come up. I think, uh, this, uh, well, she told me game up, but that it, they have to redo it in February of next year. Cause you know she's switching out. So, um, she would like them reappointed. I mean, nobody else. She's been having a hard time finding. I mean, she's looking for one more candidate, but they wish to stay.
Who's Sharon?
Sharon, um, she's the one that, she's the.
Administrator in the.
Administrator of the Housing Authority, I'm sorry. Yes.
But they haven't had any issues or resident?
No, I think Abel and Ramon have been commissioners for quite some.
Years.
Years. Yes. But they're not, she's having a hard time finding one more replacement. But no, I mean, we had a meeting just last month and everything. I mean, they do have some vacancies, but yeah.
I mean, you never once will you have to pick one up?
No.
Yeah, you do.
You're warning them off.
I mean, but, you know, in the housing authority, they got rules and regulations and sometimes people don't follow the rules. You know, it's like, that's my, that's your house, right? And you can't have ten people living in it when that happens or whatever. I mean, so do we have a motion to approve Raymond Sanchez and Abel Salsar? We have a motion by Councilman Vasquez. Second by Councilwoman Lynn. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay. Thirteen, discussion and action on the purchase of security camera system from Berneke.
Okay, in the discussion with this company, uh, they are, I didn't know at the time that they also are the surveillance camera company for the Stockdale ISD. I met these people through the Texas Municipal League Conference that we did. A young lady came and, uh, they did a survey with the crew. There'd be thirty-one cameras throughout the community that are remotely operated. Uh, they come to a bank that we plan on, they'll come to our phones to, uh, Marshal Overstreet, myself, David will have access to a site where we can see if there's motion at different period of time that they come on or whatever. Basically in the parks, around our city buildings, the library, uh, location around the fire department, whatever. There's thirty-one cameras, access installation, everything's like twenty-one thousand, just shot $22,000.
Have you gone up to the school and looked at their system, like actually looked at all, like tried to get, uh? Have you gone up to the school and looked at their system, like actually looked at all, like tried to get, uh, see if, uh, they would let y'all do that, so y'all can copycat that system?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I've actually got the, all the school cameras on my, on my phone, so I could, I can open it up and look at all the cameras, which of course is kind of small on your phone, but you can click on individual cameras and just...
Whenever you're watching those cameras, the system they have is super slow. Um, I don't know if that's, um, because of, uh...
That's your internet service.
But they have fiber up there.
Yeah, they got fiber up there. I'm, I'm just telling you from experience, cause it, it, you'll sit there and you'll watch it, and it'll freeze, 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 and then you can watch it a little more, and then it, like to watch something that you knew took basically twenty minutes, right? It'll take you about twice that long, a little more to wa, watch something.
It also, it also records, so you can go back and...
Brainos, it, as we discussed that, we had a couple of others that we made contact, and this is the only company that really came to, had time to be able to come, show the good, we have a camera in the office that's been there for the last two weeks, that has been operating. And of course, uh, it's activated by motion, if somebody came in the office after hours between this time and that time. Then of course, in daytime, it comes on and alerts you and tells you that somebody's, and it works. David hadn't made any comment, that it, did perform to his expectations.
Both parks, Sharon's in both parks.
Especially around the concession stands, the playground, different places to where you have vandalism, and, uh, kids hanging out, or favorites, uh, around the bathrooms and such as that.
And the, the twenty-two thousand, that's like a one-time thing, or it's like a free-year license, or it's like a certain period of time?
To my knowledge, it's a one-time thing.
A one-time thing. You have access to like tech experts and maintenance and all this stuff?
Guess what she's asking, every year do we have to pay like two thousand more dollars to, to keep the license or whatever?
That one, it's not on their, uh, app, the daily basis.
So once you put it in there, it's there.
Cause for it to, to be on the cloud, I know you have to, I even have to pay much for that.
Okay, very much.
Well, do y'all want to approve it, and you asked the questions, if it's not acceptable, we'll come back and review it. You don't have to sign it.
Well, I, I have to pay it back to you.
If it changes a lot. Okay, does anybody have, can we have a motion to approve the twenty-two thousand, twenty-one, almost twenty-two thousand dollars to install these cameras throughout the city? Have a motion by Councilwoman Stavodola, second by Councilwoman Lynn, all in favor, motion passes. Number fourteen, city marshal report.
Okay, last month, we had, uh, two arrests, one out, one outside the city, called assist to the sheriff's office, and a hundred and forty-two dollars patrol object.
Any questions? Okay, if there's not, go to number fifteen, fire chief's report.
Um, we have been called to three car accidents here in town, uh, one smoke alarm and one electrical fire, um, in the past month. Um, we did have a question, um, with the fish pond. Can we do some water training inside there with us not having to leave jurisdiction to go put a raft in the water? We're not putting the motorized, we're putting a raft, um, just...
Those are questions I can't answer, I have to go before the EDC and ask those questions, they're pretty particular, even though it is in the city's jurisdiction and with it, but, uh, the, I had to tell you that you could, and then I had to listen to a bunch of...
Yeah, especially we ask permission first.
Absolutely.
And we will ask for permission.
Yeah, if we can, that way it doesn't make us go to Cal Bears or somewhere to put a raft to do some training. Again, it's the raft, it's not our motorized boat, uh, motorized boat, we don't have to go out that way, but just for, like in town, we have something here, it's not swift water, but we do have water, we can get the raft, and we can do some training in it.
Uh, I, I think it's a good idea, and I hope they don't have a problem, cause you never know when that day comes, you may have to even do something there.
Yes, sir, that's kind of what we're...
And so I, I do not have a problem, but like you said, they're pretty, we, we need to ask permission. We'll, we'll ask for permission and get back with you.
Okay.
And with, and Texas might, I mean, uh, Parks and Wildlife may have a, a saying of two, see, just come there fixing to drop eight hundred rand of trout in there or something.
So January or next year?
Is it January, I, I have it, I told her, due December?
Yes.
And, uh, last deal, um, we are noticing that we're, we're getting more vandalism out at the long order station, at Station Two. Um, we had a key to be able to go in, well, they destroyed the lockbox with the key that we had, and, um, they kicked in a couple of knobs and whatnot, so...
Kicked in what?
Kicked in the doorknobs into, in the doors to try to get in. Um, they've already taken some equipment that we had in there, and they started trying to take some, some copper out of it as well. They took all the breakers and stuff out of there, and that was reported to you guys at the beginning of the year. So, so just letting you guys know.
I'll make sure it's on, okay.
Other than that, that's all.
Do you have cameras over there?
That's here.
Cameras like that, like the trick, the ones that you can use the cell phone, that would be...
We don't have cameras here. Well, I mean, yeah, it...
It's a little, a camera for a hundred dollars. It's two-way ones.
Oh, 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 oh.
Game cams, game cams out there.
Huh? Game cams would work. Cause those come to your phone.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay, city manager comments?
Had your update starting, beginning with update on the fish pond, we're within having it full, uh, maybe ten inches foot. We don't bring up any photo, of course, with the, uh, weather station's claiming it's raining, we may have a rain to where it run it over, so we're holding it there. In contact with the EDC, uh, to bring you up to date that supposedly in December, January, they're gonna stock it with some rainbow trout to begin with, and then sometime in the spring, another fish are, are supposed to come at that period.
Okay, so here's my deal. And all, I have two people that are on me all the time about this fish pond. So if they're fishing, can they keep the fish?
I, I would hate to tell you yes or no, because the tail over there likes to wag the dog, so I can't...
Can you find that out? Cause I got people that's to be on the, when is he gonna have fish?
Why don't we have him come give us an update?
That's fine, because I mean, they're like, we wanna go fish it, which I have no problem with, I just don't want...
My assumption is yes.
They have fishing lessons.
The rainbow trout, because they die in the heat, that's why they stock them in the winter.
Okay, I mean, I got, I know two people that are always asked to be, when can we go fish it? They're ready to go.
Who has to beat the fish pond, is that...
I have no idea. Okay? Flashback.
Flashback, I'm still waiting on the picket fence to be put up to be completed. They tell me they're gonna be here, then I had another subcontractor to, hey, he's subcontracting, not to me, I'm just trying to get the fence up to where we can get finished, but it is, uh, ninety-five percent complete, and, uh, we got our first, well, we got fifty-five thousand of the hundred and fifty from the government, or from the Texas Parks and Wildlife end, uh, today. And so, uh, that's where we're at, and I had hoped before we closed that we could have opened it, so now for the ribbon cutting or whatever, it'll probably postpone till spring or Easter or, uh, holiday, and next year, before we go back to the man. Okay? Library is coming along, uh, we still have to paint, put the floors down, and, uh, that was contracted out to Delta Contracting, or, uh, Mr. Osborne, uh, he has the key, whatever, and he should be getting started painting it, such as that, uh, this week. Uh, update on the firehouse rehab, the people will be here to clean and wash the floors and wax or whatever, and with that, most of that rehab is, will be completed. Two acres, we're supposed to close on the two acres with the Klein Newsom family either Thursday or Friday of this week. Uh, they made contact with me that they need a letter, uh, update from my office stating that it was all right for the city to be able, for them to subdivide that property in a two-acre tract or whatever. I may comment to them that I sent that information to them, uh, early in another project that was supposed to be going through that paperwork to go through that. Then update on the natural gas sale, we had two interested parties that made, uh, decent, one of them was a decent, a decent offer. Uh, I can give you that update, uh, as a, I have a meeting with our city attorney Thursday. After that, we may, we're sure to have a call me, to call you back in and discuss that terminology, whatever. But that, that sale is moving along, uh, and once she looks over the contract or whatever, then we can discuss the particulars in the contracts, uh, as they come. And then the next step is, of course, is the financials, uh, as you will see, uh, for this month, as we discuss this, and the general count, the deficit is four nineteen, twenty-one sixty-four. Once again, that pertains to the monies that we spent on the street project and, and the splash pack. Mainly the abundance of this is what we spent on the splash pack, out of pocket. Water account is in a deficit of fifty thousand, eight dollars and seven two cents. Once again, that reflects the amount of money that we have spent over the water tower, or stampede rehabilitation, and, uh, the water well. Now, uh, wastewater, of course, it shows a hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents. That reflects revenues from outside sales that we take from companies that use our facility to dump porta potties and such as that. And of course, the natural gas system is at, uh, minus fifty-seven, three ninety-one. That pertains to two different capital improvements, which had some cathodic protection and other, uh, rectifier stuff. That was roughly thirty-seven thousand in, in that. So, uh, as you look at those numbers, of course, the city, we're gonna be finishing the year in a deficit of around, it's gonna be close to four hundred thousand easily, if we don't get monies back from Texas Parks and Wildlife before the closing of the year. Then, once again, as I had discussions with the auditor, and he was making comments about where we were financially on this year's audit, I go in my tenure, uh, sitting in my office for the city, this coming audit will be the worst audit from my desk that I have presented to you since I took office, because of the different expenditures that we've overcome. Uh, also, the prompt to, on financials or whatever, I did submit with our water storage tank, with being shot this, that, and two, our insurance company, uh, the vendor Aqua Store who built the storage, and I've been about rehabbing it, fixing it, putting new panels in it to, to be able to get it back into use, and such as that, their bill was roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. That's a put, basically, when they're done, it should be a new, a new used unit. I submitted that information to our insurance company because they were waiting around what it was gonna cost. They sent me back today at four eighteen PM that they will cover a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars of that through our insurance company, so out of pocket to rehab the, the water storage facility is gonna be forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, um, possibly some change. Of course, in every job that you start, there's always add-ons. And I know one of the problems I got is that storage vessel sits right in the hallway of the electrical line. So the first thing they're gonna have when they come is I can't get no man lift over here, whatever, and we're gonna have to cut the electricity off or do whatever, so there, there're gonna be some other things in here that we will discuss.
I would think, if, just my idea, you might just get with Phelps and pay the bill, and move the electrical line somewhere where it's not ever in the way, in case we ever have to do that again.
Once I get, once I get the, the real estate transaction in that property, then I can, I, I, I have a place to move it. But her driveway that goes that electrical line, because of subdivided and the tract of property she owned before, it's been subdivided, and that's the only way to get to it.
I know what you mean, but in the years coming, we need to...
Exactly.
Because if something ever happens, again, we're gonna be in the same deal, and I know that lady ain't gonna want electricity cut.
And then as you look at your total deposits that you have, of course, we have a total deposits of four million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, which includes one million, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, six hundred and seventy-three dollars, eleven cents that are owned by the, uh, Stockdale Economic Development Corporation, and we have one million, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents in different, uh, CDs at Third Coast Bank in La Brea, and those are coming due. They were at point two five percent, they are now drawing two point...
Five.
Point two five percent they were drawing, they are now drawing two point five percent compounded, and, uh, up to February, which they renewed, and in discussion with the mayor and myself about a gamble, they wanted to, what, they gave us the option to go ahead and, uh, renew now or wait to February. In discussion with the mayor, as we're gambling that the interest rate will go up between now and February. Of course, in, uh, investments for the city, maximum period of time that we can invest funds is twenty-four months maximum at a period of time. So, uh, there again, right now, for the next six months, we're drawing two point five percent at that time. I keep prompting about what we go to again, so we're basically, we make, uh, over the last two years, maybe four thousand dollars off that investment, we, we should be making twenty-five thousand dollars a year off of that. And with that, unless there's any other further questions, uh, from my, my office and my desk, that's all I have.
I have a current report on the fishing situation.
On the which one?
Fishing situation. You can put eight hundred rainbow trout in there, catch one, and keep it. You have to abide by official regulations in Texas Parks and Wildlife, and so if you wanna catch a number of rainbow trout every day, then you're welcome to, I think they're gonna be eight to ten inches per C D C.
It's fine with me, I mean, I'm wonderful. And, uh, if that's why, only reason I ask is, I have a brother-in-law that put these certain catfish in his deck, and there is catfish, and you can't take them out. And that was Phil.
Where he's there.
Yeah, no, either.
Where he's there when he catches.
Yeah, so anyway, number seventeen, action to pay pending bills, do we have a motion to pay pending bills? We have a motion by Councilwoman Stavodola, second by Councilwoman Lynn, all in favor, motion passes. Eighteen, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilwoman Vasquez, second by Councilwoman Lynn, all in favor, motion passes to be adjourned. Yeah, they throw a...
Don't breathe. That's, well, that's, that, so that's all, all these catfish are supposed to not freak. When you buy a pond catfish, they're not supposed to freak, but the one... ones that you, they divide, uh, at different places, they seem like, don't hurt my dad's house, I mean, you catch a full count or you.
But it's like, oh no, those are some hot bread thing, they get to about five